I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals. Before we begin tonight's hearing, I'm going to go over several of the ground rules this board operates under. In Gardner, three members of the board must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in public notice, but the board is under no obligations to adhere to that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present shall be heard. Any other interested parties present will be heard. Those in opposition to the application will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render a decision on special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special for it to be granted. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is in the office of the city clerk. No variance, special permit, or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requested each person identify himself or herself as to name an address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing to my left, Mel Cornett; to my right, Randy Haglen; sitting as chair, myself, Ray LaFawn. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? There are no objections. Okay, and I'll state it again, please silence your cell phones if you have not, and then we'll begin tonight. There is one case that we may move to the front if...
I haven't seen him.
Haven't seen him, okay. We're waiting for one gentleman, and I'll just go according to the regal right now. If the gentleman comes in, I may interject his case in between and move forward. Okay, the first item I have, here is the application of Mr. Michael Diaz to construct a second driveway at 25 Stephanie Drive, parcel ID M17-15-3A located in a general three residential zoning district, and it was denied as it does not comply with Chapter And that is each parking area may have one additional access driveway. For each 200 feet of frontage, provided such access driveways shall be at least 200 feet apart on the parking measured from the center line of each driveway. As of today, we receive the request from Mr. Diaz to withdraw his application. So I'm going to ask, do I hear a motion from the board to render a decision on the withdrawal request?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? And I'll just read his thing, it just says, "I'm canceling my driveway permit." Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of granting the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, withdrawal granted. Okay, the second one I have here is an application from Mr. Ken Mattson of Mattson Homes Two, Inc., the application to construct a 40-foot wide access driveway at 146B Greenwood Street in Gardner, Mass., parcel ID M22-19-21A, located in a general residential three zoning district, GR3. It was denied because it does not comply with Chapter 675-720(c)(1) of the city code of Gardner. The code states that your access driveway must be, may be, 24 feet wide at maximum. And we received a letter from Mr. Mattson on September 14th, 2022, addressing the zoning board of appeals, 115 Pleasant Street, Room 101, Gardner, Mass. To whom it may concern, Mattson Homes Two, Inc., is requesting that the petition to grant a waiver to allow a 40-foot wide driveway at 146B Greenwood Street be withdrawn. This is being withdrawn without any prejudice. Thank you, Kenneth Mattson, dated 9/14/22. Do I hear a motion to move on this, request a withdrawal?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of approving this withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No opposition? If they were all so quick. Okay, the next case that I have is Travis Mags, 24 June Street, Gardner, Mass. Your application to alter the height of your existing garage located at 24 June Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID R12-15-26, located in a single-family residential one zoning district, SFR1, is denied as it is a nonconforming structure. Chapter 675-420 states that a special permit is required to extend or alter a nonconforming structure. Mr. Mags, agent or attorney?
Travis Mags, 24 June Street. I'm just asking for the permit to...
Hold on a minute.
Do that sentence.
Over here, please.
Sure.
We want to get you on camera.
[laughter]
Go ahead, Mr. Mags, state what you want to do and why.
I'd like to increase the roof height of my garage by three feet, primarily to put a bigger door in and to redo the roof. Eventually, I plan to do more work inside, but for now, is put a bigger door in. As you see, the pitch is, it's too small to fit my truck in. That's still a challenge.
Okay. I just, I have a question that I'd ready to file. Yeah, I know you want to raise the roof, but it also says some repairs or re-please on the roof. Are you extending the width of the garage at all?
Nope.
So it's going to maintain the same footprint that it has today? Okay. All right. First, I'll ask if my members have any quick question up front?
No, it's pretty clear.
No, it's pretty clear.
One thing you have to address, and I'm going to ask it before I go through the liturgy of how many people am asked to speak. There are three issues. I mean, there's nine issues.
Nine, yeah.
For a special permit, and I'm going to ask you to address those nine issues. I know you've written some things down, but the people here that may be interested do not know what you've written. So if you can address those nine issues, then we can move along in the case.
I'll read it from my...
Absolutely.
Whatever makes you ready to prepare.
It's been a while since we've pulled the case.
If you don't have it, I have copies of yours.
If you want.
Want to read the questions, too?
Go ahead.
First question was, the proposal should be sort of, should be located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed, and where the entire city shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses permitted by the rate in the same district. And I said, the proposal to raise the roof on the garage, 24 June Street, will not change the character of the neighborhood in any way, is for the purpose to install a larger garage door to access the garage with my pile truck along the repairing, replacing the worn shingles in the roof and upset garage. Number two, proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets, property, and improvements. I responded with, this proposal will not affect vehicular or pedestrian movement or on or around 24 June Street and adjacent streets. No other property will be affected by this project besides a... Some of this is what is going to happen while the project is being done. Like a dumpster will be located in the driveway of said address while I'm doing the job. The only time it's going to be there is when I put all the used stuff off the shingles and all the stuff's going to be in a dumpster.
Yep.
That'll be temporary. That's the only effect that it'll be. And probably when they drop off materials, be on the side of the address in the grass, won't be in anybody's way, won't be in the street. There's plenty of room on the side of the house to put all the materials needed for the repair. Question number three, the proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading, unloading vehicles, and good products and materials, equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment or use. A little unclear with these questions because all I'm doing is raising the roof, so there's not going to be any traffic, but I responded with consideration to the vehicles that would be there dropping off materials. So I said, all parking will be done in the extra space in the driveway because the driveway actually is a six-foot driveway, plenty of room in there to put vehicles, including spot for the dumpster. And any other vehicles can be parked on the side of the said property, along with any delivered materials and equipment for the duration of the project only. So there'll be plenty of space to put everything, and not going to be anybody's way, not going to be in the street. Question... Four, the proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use and disposal of sewage, refuge, and other waste products and methods of drainage of surface water. The proposal will include adequate electrical outlets for lighting and miscellaneous tools used. Proper surface water drainage will be adequate and only changed from original function by elevating three feet. There was not and will not be any sewage piped from said location. Question number five, the proposal should not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. I responded with, this proposal will not constitute excessive water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, or lights more than any normal daily operations of a home garage. There will not be any offensive structures added, there will not be any site features considered offensive. Question number six, the proposal should not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, vehicles, or pedestrians as determined by the SPGA. I responded with, this proposal will not change the relationship formed between neighbors to whom I have lived next to for 11 years, nor will this proposal cause any hazard to any vehicles or pedestrians. A small inconvenience will only be incurred during construction. Question number seven, the proposal should be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. I responded with, this proposal abide by the general purpose and intent of this chapter 675, Section 1170, and will not adversely affect the normal characteristics of neighborhood. Question number eight, the proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities. I responded with, this proposal will not have a significant impact of city services. The amount of electricity should be relatively the same, as well as the tax base. Employment opportunities will not be impacted at all. Question number nine, this proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. I responded with, this proposal is consistent with the positive change in protecting the environment. The dilapidated garage door will be replaced with a more peeling one, and the new roof and door will increase home values in the neighborhood from the election.
Thank you, Mr. Mags. Well done. Okay. I'm going to withhold my question until I get through a number of people, so the first thing I would ask, are any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A comment was from our building commissioner. Are there any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters who would like to speak in favor of...
What's an abutter?
Hmm?
Neighbor. Neighbor, that'd be me. You want me to stand up?
And your name and address?
John Doobie, 25 June Street. I've been Travis's neighbor since I've lived there, since, you know...
Since I've been there.
Yeah, so probably 10, 12 years.
10 years.
And I'm the contractor. Then what's the problem with the garage? I have no problem with it. It's only, like you said, it's only going to bring value to it. It's not doing anything different, you know? But bringing up the value of the house and helping them out.
Understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Are there any other abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any interested parties who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. I'll ask my board if they have any questions at this point?
I don't know.
Randy?
Just in your, excuse me, raising of the roof, you planning on any additional lighting, exterior lighting to the garage?
Exterior, no. Inside lighting, yes.
Inside, okay.
Not outside.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, Mr. Mags, since you'll be repairing the roof, et cetera, how do you drain the water off your roof right now? Does it go into an easter off and run off, or just run off?
There's actually an extra, like 18 inches of cement on both sides of the garage that the water drops onto and it goes into the ground.
Okay, so it does not flow onto your abutters property or anything like that?
No.
And you're not changing anything after you repair the roof, everything's going to still do the same thing?
Probably two windows on the side that are already in it. You probably could put a bigger window in it.
Yeah, but the water is not going to flow away, it's going to stay right where it goes now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing's going to change with that.
Okay. Anything at this point, Bill?
No.
Randy?
No.
Okay, you feel comfortable to move on this?
Based upon the information provided by the applicant, I would think so, yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we act upon this application of Travis Mags to raise the roof on his garage by three feet.
Yeah, and then repair the side, too.
Yeah.
But with no extension, no increase in the size of the garage?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of granting the special permit to Mr. Mags to raise the roof and repair the side without changing the footprint of their property, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? No opposition, special permit granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too, thank you.
Okay. Next case is that of Ryan Proctor, application to construct an addition at 60 Yale Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID M22-24-2 located in a single-family residential one zoning district, SFR1, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 2:1, Table of Lot, Area, Frontage, Yard, and Height Requirements of the City Code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your requested, your use requested requires a 30-foot front setback. Your plan shows less, and I reviewed the plan, and if I'm correct, it's about 15 feet.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Before we go too far, I just want to have a disclosure. In my work, I do have a lot of work with business relationship with Dillis and Roy. It will not have a bearing on this case.
Okay. You're representing Dillis and Roy?
Yes, Ryan Proctor from Dillis and Roy, representing.
Do you have any issue with the issue that Mr. Haglen brought up?
I have no issue. I haven't worked...
I don't know him. I've worked with one of the other engineers.
Okay. Well, I think it's a pretty easy, clear case. We've got a setback requirement problem here.
Exactly.
So, but that's what we're going to focus on. And you're going to represent Mr. Ryan Proctor?
I...
You are Ryan?
Yes, I'm representing...
Okay, just state your name and address, Mr. Proctor, and we can go forward.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Proctor with Dillis and Roy, 1 Main Street in Lunenburg. I'm representing the owners of the property, Bill and Donna Price, and the property is 60 Yale Street. That was noted in the intro. So I have a presentation here, a plan here. The existing lot contains a single-family dwelling, which is indicated here in green. And as noted on the plan, the existing house is nonconforming with respect to the front yard zoning setback and the side yard setback. Indicated here in red is the proposed addition of the house, which again, as mentioned, does require a front yard variance. We're asking for 15 feet of relief from the 30-foot required front yard setback. You'll note that there is a portion of the existing house that is overlapping with the proposed addition. The applicants have been working with an architect to remove a portion of the existing house, which is a four-season porch currently, and then to construct the addition onto the existing house. The addition will be located such that it is in line with the existing house. So while we are requesting the front yard variance here, the frontage of Yale Street, the right-of-way is curved on the lot, so the lot shape is actually why we're for the addition. The addition ends up being a little bit closer to that right-of-way because of the curve here on Yale Street. I had gone into details about the three criteria for the variance in my narrative. I'm happy to go through those if you'd like me to, here as well. So criteria one reads, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this code would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. To that, I responded, due to the shape of the lot and the location of the existing structure on the lot, which is currently nonconforming, it is not possible to construct the addition in full compliance with the current front yard zoning setback requirements. Further, the proposed addition is aligned with the front of the house. Because the existing house is slightly skewed relative to Yale Street, the proposed addition will be closer to the right-of-way than the existing structure. Criteria number two, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. And to that, I responded, the applicant is proposing to add on to the existing dwelling. The proposed use of the dwelling will remain unchanged, and the house will be constructed such that the proposed building, the addition, will fit in aesthetically and will be harmonious with the other properties in the neighborhood. Architectural plans were included in the application package submitted to the board. Criteria number three, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this code, but not otherwise. The purpose of the code is separate into several subsections, so I'll just cut through this. Section A, promote the general welfare of the city of Gardner. The addition will not substantially alter the characteristics of the lot, nor will it have any adverse impacts to the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. Subsection B, protect health and safety. The proposed addition does not require any modifications to the existing driveway or the frontage on Yale Street. The proposed addition is aligned with the front of the existing dwelling and will not adversely affect vehicular or pedestrian use of the property nor within Yale Street right-of-way. Subsection C, convenience and general welfare of its inhabitants. The proposed addition will fit in with the architectural character of the neighborhood and will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Subsection D, encourage the most appropriate use of the land throughout the city. The proposed residential use of the property will be exactly the same as the existing use and will not change the characteristic of the lot nor the neighborhood. Subsection E, preserve the cultural, historical, and agricultural heritage of the community. As mentioned already, the use of the property will be the same as the existing use, single-family residential, and there will be no impact to the heritage of the community. Increase the amenities of the city. The proposed addition has been designed in a manner that will not unreasonably diminish the amenities of the property. We do intend to use the existing utility connections for the house, and again, the use is not changing from the single-family residential. Lastly, subsection G, reduce the hazard from fire by regulating the location and the use of the buildings in the area of the open space around them. The area of the proposed addition is currently lawn. The proposed addition is aligned with the front of the existing house and will not substantially alter the characteristics of the lot.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Proctor. I have a couple of questions, and I'll hold until we go through.
That's it.
Okay, first, I'll ask my, any of my board members have a question right now?
Yes, I do. And when you talked about removing part of the structure...
Yep.
Is that structure a current decking, or is it part of the house?
It's, there's a foundation, it's currently part of the foundation, but those portions will be removed, and the existing, the proposed foundation will tie right into the existing foundation on the corners.
There was an addition to the main house.
Sir, you'll have an opportunity to speak, okay? Thank you.
Is it a full-depth foundation, or is it just going to be slab upgrade?
The proposed, it's going to be a crawl space, it's going to be foundation, and then it's going to be four feet from the slab to the brick wall.
So you're just going to, whatever you're taking off the house or removing, you're just filling it back in with the new addition?
Essentially, yes. Yeah, that same area.
Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
I'm still wondering, what is that current structure? Is that a deck, current decking, or is it just a foundation? What is it exactly you're removing?
I believe it's foundation. I guess, I suppose I don't know 100%. I apologize.
Is he the owner of the property here?
I think you said it was a four-season porch, didn't you?
Yes, area, it's fully enclosed.
Okay, so it is a full structure there?
Yep.
That you're taking down.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, good. All right, first, are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you to the applicant. Can I, yeah? If that's only a crawl space, is the four-season porch a full basement?
It's a crawl space.
That's a crawl space as well?
Sorry.
Are you the owner?
I'm the owner.
Oh, okay, if you're the owner, just state your name and address, and I'll allow you to be part of this three-way conversation.
Yeah, I'm William Price. I'm with my wife, the owner of that property.
Do we have sewer, water and sewer there?
Yeah, there are each other guests in the street.
Where does the, because Yale Street stops in the middle of that property somewhere.
Yeah, that's something I've been wondering.
And that's something that I think you guys should know.
Yale Street stops about here. Okay, this is all paper street.
That's the paper section, okay.
You know, there's a long driveway that goes up to the Boris property on the top of, top of the hill. And I believe he owns most all the land around, and has said that he has checked in as far as developing any of that land. It would be too costly to have to extend the street and the utilities, so he's not going to anyway. So I think it's very unlikely that this, this part up here is ever going to be the street, ever going to be actualized as a functional street.
So except for the Boris property on the top of the hill?
Yeah.
There are no structures or homes going past yours going north?
That's correct.
It's just...
There's no road. There's no road. That's right.
And there's no road other than his driveway to his home on top?
Right.
And we're not planning on adding any driveways or anything?
No.
For the addition? Nothing? That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Garage is on the south side of the house?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor.
Drive-in garage right here.
Drive-in garage, yeah.
Gene?
Is, is, I know your addition is in alignment with the rest of the house. Is there a reason why you didn't set it back the three feet so it would not be... why you didn't set it back the three feet so it would not be less non-conforming than what's existing?
I suppose it, I suppose it could have been, I guess the thinking really was that since the street wasn't really there, that it wouldn't, you know, it was not make really a, an issue, and that this would be more attractive to have the house lined up like
If you did move, push the addition back, then there would be a jog in the front and the back.
Right, right.
So it would not flow on the same non-conforming lines.
Right, right.
Now, that red small square, is that like a small front porch or something?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, it would be a solid, solid cement porch.
And there is a secondary access door there as well for the existing porch.
And that's going to remain, correct?
Yes, yeah, actually, the, this, this part that's being removed was an addition to the house, and it, yeah, it's partly a porch, but it's also a dining area in the back. So it has just a crawl space under it now, and will, the whole area will have a four-foot crawl space for the planned addition.
Okay.
You're set.
The moment, yep.
You're set. Okay, I'll move on a little bit. Are there any other representatives of the city who speak regarding this application? Any other representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of? Any interested parties, including abutters, who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any other interested parties, including abutters, who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. Randy, and Mel, do you have any comments or questions at this point? I have one more, but I'll hold it.
I'm good.
Ask you a question.
Okay. Is there a garage in this house?
Yes, it's a one-car garage at the basement level on this end. The driveway is wider, so there's actually room for two, two cars in front, but just a single-car garage.
Okay, any no plans to add on addition of a garage?
No.
So you've got a room for the park, one car inside?
One car inside.
And a room for a second car outside?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, what I did is I pulled up the Google Earth map of your property, and it shows the improved section, like you stated, improved section of Yale Street, about equal with the northern edge of your existing home. You know, that's about what it shows.
No other questions or anything? Randy?
No.
Mel?
No.
You have one?
No, I'm good.
Okay, if there are no further comments, et cetera, I think what we would like to do is view the property, is to come out, view it, and if you could mark where you're going to put your addition. Doesn't have to be fancy. It can be a rock that's sprayed. Don't need anything, you know, stakes and tapes and all that, just to mark where those corners are going to be?
Yeah.
One, two, three corners? And so we just can take a look at it, look at the street. I lived on Harvard, so I know what this looks like exactly, but, you know, for the rest of the members, we'll go up and take a look at it and do that. So what I'm going to have to do is, I can continue the case to next month, that we would be back here again if any issues do come up, and then leave the case open. And if everything seems to be satisfied at that point, we can close the meeting and vote on it. Do you have a timeline for this construction to take place?
Well, at this point, we're not planning to do anything until next spring to get, get the votes and everything.
Gone a little late.
Too late to do much this fall, so, yeah, we won't be starting construction until next spring.
Okay, so that makes it pretty easy then, even if we take another month to look at this?
Yeah, I won't be here next month, but I'm heading south.
You heading back to Florida?
Well, Alabama this year.
Okay. All right, so what we'd like to do is probably within the next week, come out and view the property. Who should we contact? You or Mr. Proctor?
You can contact me. My daughter lives there full-time, but...
Could you please provide your phone number so Mariella can take it down?
Sure. Ready?
Are you ready, Mariella? Okay, what we'll do is come up with a date and time that's convenient.
Try and arrange it now? Do you want to try and arrange it now?
If we can.
I can't do this Saturday.
I can't either.
Okay.
Sure, I set my phone off, so I got to turn it on. What are you proposing, Randy, the 29th?
Yeah, I can do that.
I can do that.
29th?
I hope not to be here then, but my daughter...
Will somebody be there, some representative of some sort?
Yes, my daughter should be there.
All right, and she's fully aware of what you're attempting?
Yeah.
Mr. Proctor, are you going to be in attendance?
If you'd like me to be there, I'm happy to.
Yes, I would.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so you can get things marked off, then we can view it next, on the 29th. What time is good for all of you?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine? Nine it is. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Then just can I have a quick motion to continue this to next month?
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of continuing the case of Mr. Price presented by Mr. Proctor to next month, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No opposition? We'll continue this to the November meeting, and if everything goes well, we'll probably render a decision that night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Proctor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay. Since Attorney Flick has joined us. Oh, there he is. I didn't see him. I'm going to go out of order here a little bit. The next case that I've got before us, is that of Donna Shalfo? 480 Parker Street, Gardner, Mass? And it says, "Your application to construct a fence at 480 Parker Street, Gardner, Mass, parcel ID M22-6-9. Located in the single-family residential one zoning district, SFR 1, is denied as your intent to place a fence on property owned by the city of Gardner. And you have the right to appeal the decision before this board, which you have." I will just state upfront, when this came in and I reviewed it, the item that caught my eye was a fence going up on city property. So at that point, I made a phone call to our city solicitor, looking for an interpretation, et cetera, on this. He has volunteered to come here this evening. Before we begin the case, he has a statement that he would like to share with everyone in this audience that's connected with this case. And after his statements, we'll see what the responses are, and then we'll decide how we're going to proceed, if we proceed. Attorney Flick?
Thank you. Attorney John Flick, City Solicitor, 144 Central Street. Since a variance technically constitutes a disposition in property, and it's a city property, only the city council has the legal authorization to grant any disposition in city property, other than through an executive decision like a license agreement or a sale of the property. The ZDA does not have any legal authority to grant a variance on city-owned land, and if it were granted, it would be null and void as a matter of law. So therefore, this application really should just be denied, unless it's withdrawn ahead of time, because legally it would be an enforceable variance.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Flick. So, Mrs. Donna Shalfo, okay? I think you understand exactly, if you want to speak, you can state your name and...
Philip Shalfo, her husband.
Okay.
Our property together.
Okay, do you understand what Attorney Flick said about?
Yes.
You said yes, Donna said no.
Not really, I'm sorry, but...
Well, it's city-owned land, it's public property. It's owned by the public, and this, you cannot have a variance on publicly-owned land, where we interfere with the public's access and use of the property through the city.
Can I ask one question? There's already a fence there.
Doesn't matter.
We bought the property.
Doesn't matter. So then it's technically, legally, it's called an encroachment, and the city can enforce that encroachment at any time in order to remove all of that encroaching fence.
Can I ask one more question?
You may have one more question.
Does that apply to neighbors as well?
It applies to every property in the city of Gardner.
All right, so I have some questions. All right. What I gather is, then, that this board has no legal authority around this.
That is correct.
Okay. If that's the case, then we would want to withdraw our application. Would we retain the fee that we paid, seeing as how it's not appropriate for this board to even hear the case?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question first before I answer that. I'll answer a part of your question first. Yes, you have the right to withdraw your, withdraw your application from this board. If you do not withdraw it, the board has the option to, it could just take the information we have, you know, do a quick vote, and just automatically it's going to be denied, so it's not going to happen. But I'm going to pose my question to Mr. Gene. When the applicant came to you regarding this, did you inform them that this was on city property, and they did not have the right to do this?
I actually had a phone conversation with Mr. Shalfo about this, and I explained to him that it would be, it would constitute a trespass, and that the board wouldn't have the authority to do that. And I informed him that he would lose his $350 fee because we have to advertise it, and we will be providing him with a hearing, and he said he wanted to proceed.
Okay. And that sort of validates the issue regarding the fee, is we had to publish this in the newspaper because you chose not to follow what his guidance was?
He did not explicitly say that you had no authority.
I heard that conversation.
She was part of that conversation. It was on speaker. He did say that you don't allow it.
But he didn't say you couldn't try.
He did not say you couldn't. He didn't say that you had no authority. He didn't say that.
Mr. Gene, I'll give you retort.
My recollection is exactly what I told you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You called him stubborn for trying, for wanting to try.
Well, I think, you know, that's not the issue for the board, is that you, you want to put a fence on city property that's not owned by you, you take the public use away if you want, if the board grants this. So I think we could, I mean, very easily take care of this, but the board could vote to deny your application based on not having the appropriate authority to do this. If you want to proceed after that, you have the right to do that, and you contact council or you contact the city and see if there's any recourse that you can take. But relative to returning your fee, because we had to go to print and paper in the newspapers for two weeks, we have to pay for that, and that's all part of this. So the answer would be, no, we cannot return your fee at this point. One of my other cases I called tonight had the same question at the end of his statement. You wanted to get his fee back, and, excuse me, and the response is the same, "Sorry, we had to publish this in the paper by law, and there's a charge to that, and the time to put the whole package together," so I denied his also for return of fee. Okay. So you have the right to withdraw your application. You can do that right here, just stating right before the board now, that we choose to withdraw our application. I'll even throw the terms without prejudice, because I'm not sure how we'll proceed, but if it's city property, unless they change city regulations, it's, I don't think you'll get very far.
It would have to be state law, Mr. Chairman.
What?
It would be state law to be having it changed.
Would you like to withdraw your application?
There won't be prejudice, or there will?
Well, if you, if you withdraw it without prejudice, it means you could bring it again or something to change.
If conditions change.
If conditions change.
So you just add "without prejudice" to say that's my withdrawal?
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Shalfo?
Can I ask a question, please?
Another one? Yeah, so go ahead.
When you look at the GIS mapping, you know, that, like, to a city hall at a property, there's three properties with the property line going through, like, a house, the house next to us. It goes through it. I just don't understand how all this happened.
Is that your house?
No, it's the house next to us.
It's the abandoned house.
I can't answer that. I don't know, and that's not part of this case, so I...
Yeah, I'm just, the whole thing is...
I'm going to let Mr. Gene answer this.
The map that's available throughout GIS is not entirely accurate, and it, literally, if you look at different years, there's a 2021 map, and there's a 2019 map. If you look at both of them, you'll see that the lines are in different places on those maps, and it's entirely based on where the satellite was when it took the picture.
Oh, this was last year. Yeah, I have seen it.
Okay.
Okay.
So?
Agree to withdraw?
Yes.
Without prejudice?
You want to withdraw?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved to him.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of allowing a withdrawal without prejudice to the applicant, Donna Shalfo, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposition? Withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case before the board. ERCOT Family LLC, 20 School Street, Suite 203. It's your application to operate an inpatient care center at 205 213 School Street, Gardner, Mass, parcel ID R22-7-28, located in the industrial one zoning district, I-1, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:2, Table of Uses #20, Hospital, Sanitarium, or Nursing, Rest, or Convalescent Home of the City Code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your requested use requires a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. Representative of the ERCOT Family LLC, Agent or Attorney?
My name is George Dole. I'm from, project manager from Jones Witsit Architects in Greenfield, Mass, and I'm also here with...
Jennifer LaRash. I'm the Vice President of Acute and Day Programs for CSO. We have an outpatient office, 205 School Street.
How do you spell your last name, George?
Dole, D-O-L-E. And just for your information, I'll be answering any questions regarding zoning-related and building-related, and she'll be providing anything related to the program.
Okay, yeah, that's, program is already in place there, or part of it?
Part of it. We have an outpatient program currently on the third floor.
Yes, so it's an adjunct to this, what's being proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
And your name again?
Okay, and you said Mr. Dole?
Dole, yep, like the pineapple.
Okay.
That's easy.
Mr. Dole?
Yes.
If you want to present the case to the board, what they're planning to do or would like to do?
Sure.
And then just address, under the special permit, those nine conditions.
Yes, and I have that written out, so I'll address that. I'll give an overview, and you should have a complete package that was provided of eight and a half by 11, and I think there was some 11 by 17 foldouts as well within that.
Yes, there are. Yes, there are.
Yeah, so, I guess I'll just do it in order, and so, so our firm has worked with clinical and support options for many years. We did the work with CSO and the ERCOT family back in 2015 in Building 22, third floor, and this is now a proposed use in Building 24, which is third floor and adjacent. This is a old mill building that's very large with a multitude of programs within it, and the proposed use, again, falls under the broad umbrella of hospital, rest home, a few other things for, for that type of use, so that's why it's a special permit.
I'm just gonna ask you a question.
Yes.
Because I notice you keep looking at these two individuals, they're nodding yes, et cetera, as sort of the questions. May you, would you please introduce who these two individuals are?
I'll let them introduce themselves, I apologize.
My name is Doug Spence, I'm the Maintenance Superintendent and Operations Manager for ERCOT Family LLC.
Okay.
I'm Tanya Hardy, and I am the Office Manager for ERCOT Family LLC.
Did you get any questions about your name?
Yeah, your knees are safe, I promise.
Thank you very much. Okay, you may continue.
Yes, so, you have the program, the architect's office, and the owner of the property who, there'll be a long-term lease in, in effect if, if this, if a special permit is allowed. So in terms of the project, it's at the third floor, and the first of your visuals, large visuals, shows a layout of the Massachusetts property map, showing where that property is on the third floor of, off of SCHOOL STREET, and there's a defunct railroad track between that and the other mill building across the other side is also owned by the ERCOT family.
It's new and well aware, yes.
And the proposed use, all of the work is within that third floor, 10,000 square foot space renovated, it was an office space.
All internal?
All internal, except for one move, which is to provide an outside egress stair, which will be in the plane of the building envelope, within the plane of the setbacks of the rest of the building, for an exterior stair egress, because per the code and use group, our residential for this that has a business use and a residential group, sprinkler building, which this building is fully sprinkled, the maximum travel distance is 250 feet to the exit, and that's only required to be within one exit. There is several exits out of the building, but the one to the front exit is 190 feet from the front of this space, but the space is 170 feet long, so if you're gonna egress from the back of it, you'd be over the 250. So by adding an exterior egress-only stair for life safety, where, meaning the requirements be less than 250 feet.
Is that the one, the picture that's included in here?
Correct, that's a picture.
Erector set?
A rector set, it'll be covered, it'll, it'll meet the requirement for an exterior egress stair, it won't be a, you know, it won't be a, you know, Saiba building, you know, jambalaya or anything like that, it'll be fully, you know, seven, seven-inch maximum rise, 11-inch tread.
It looks, it looks pretty large.
Yes.
Did you say use group, our? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it includes an overnight stay use group.
It's not an I use group?
It's not an I, it's, I can get you a complete code thing, but we've, we've done other work with, with CSO, and because it's, they're capable self-care, it's, I believe, six to eight beds.
Yeah, it's eight beds.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
It falls in the R...
It must be R4.
R4 or R3, I think it's actually R3.
That's a single-family home.
No, it's R4, sorry. I apologize.
No worries.
Yeah, no, it's R4, I believe, yes, but it's, it's, it's a very good question about the institutional, it does not fall under that.
Okay, thank you.
And we've done similar projects in other towns, so it's been vetted, I just didn't have the coding for it right in front of me.
What type of care are you providing?
Sure. So we are proposing an emergency service program, which includes a crisis team. We were awarded a contract from the state, which starts January 1st, so the crisis team will be located there, as well as an eight-bed crisis stabilization unit, and so that's the eight-bed overnight program, so it's an adult diversion program, mental health, substance use, it is 18 and older only, and this is voluntary, so it's not a locked-inpatient unit, and all of the people that would be there would have to be able to attend to their own ADRs, it's, you know, speaking to the, the questions I think that you're opposing about the, the use. I can go into more detail about...
Well, you said it's an overnight stay, but is it one overnight or is it multiple overnights?
So, that's a great question. So that's, it's an insurance-driven program, so people can stay, generally speaking, our average length of stay is three to five days, could be up to 10. The role of this, of this program is to, again, divert people from inpatient or step them down from inpatient, perhaps they're not ready to return home yet, so they have additional support while they transition back home. And we, as I think was referenced, we currently have two other programs in other parts of the state that I think you have worked on, that we currently, much larger programs, this is a much smaller program.
What's the maximum number of patients you could have?
Eight.
Eight? And that'd be also staying overnight?
Yes.
So a maximum of eight, and possibly up to 10 days?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll sit. May I?
Mr. Jean, you may.
10,000 square feet, pretty dense.
Again, there's two, it's a combined program. The 24-hour program is eight beds, and it, it's set up like a home. There's a kitchen, there's a living room, there's office space, there's bedrooms, which are two occupants per room, and then we have our crisis team. So that's, that's not an overnight...
Do you have a breakdown on the square footage for each?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry that's so small still, but that's...
Yeah, that's not good for these old eyes.
No.
I'll get through it.
It can stay from here.
So these are the two, two bedrooms with two beds per, per, per room, that one, that one, that's a double, that's a double, that's a double, single, single, so that's the eight bedrooms. This is a, a living room area, kitchen area, restroom and showers, seating area, there's also reception for, for the staff and the respite, respite care, and there's all, respite care, and then there's crisis interviews, and there's also office space for a variety of programs, so it includes both programs for the, the six to eight people at, at, in the bedrooms, and then also interviewing other people who may be sent to, to the hospital or to other places.
Thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, which, which diagram are you looking at with all that?
That should be, and I hope you have the 11 by 17, yes, you do, this one right here. It's, and in whatever order you found it.
That's Building 23.
And it's Building 23 above, and this is actually Building 22.
Building 24.
Or Building 24, sorry, doing it in the wrong order.
Okay, we're all set.
I know.
I just, go ahead, I'm not gonna interrupt you, I have a question.
Okay. So, again, the main, the main, as we see it, the biggest issue, the requirement for the special permit is because this is in a mixed, it's a, well, it's a mixed use, but it's, it's not allowed by right in this group, it's only allowed by special permit. And I've got a few more drawings, but the main thing is, I'm glad to go through the list and that kind of the nine points.
Please, because like I said to the, the first applicant, people here do not know what your responses are.
Gotcha.
They do not review your file, so this is where we get it onto the floor.
All right. And these have been reviewed with clinical and support options, so they should be accurate from, from the clinical standpoint as well. Okay. So, your criteria under item B is the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and/or the entire city, and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses, and other uses permitted by right in the same district. And the three-part answer is, item A, the proposed project will include short-term housing for up to eight adults, as well as jobs for several clinical office staff, including nurses and psychologists. Item B, the existing large building located at 205-213-SCHOOL STREET includes a variety of businesses, including a CSO clinical office space and medical offices within the building currently. Doctors associated with Haywood Hospital have office space at 205-SCHOOL STREET. The CSO program will continue the use of the building as a location for medical and mental health programs, as well as for the wellness of residents of Gardner and surrounding communities. Item C, the location of the proposed program on the third floor of Building 24 of the complex is far away from any residential houses.
Is this a 24-hour intake?
So, yes and no. So the emergency service programs, we provide 24-hour crisis intervention. The overnight hours will be done on an on-call basis. The, the model for emergency service programs has changed, so it's not a consistent 24-hour intake.
Okay.
The admissions would only happen during normal working hours, from 8:00 AM until 11:00 PM, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I guess admissions, I mean, if somebody is in need at 2:00 AM, so they have to wait till the following business day.
The crisis team would have to evaluate, and we could bring them in, but oftentimes, I can tell you, we do not utilize admissions on the overnight in either of our other programs. It's certainly an option.
Explain to me the difference then between what an admission is and what a crisis management team is.
Option. So a crisis evaluation is when our crisis team meets with an individual and determines what...
At your site or at another site, could be hospital, could be wherever?
Right now, it's hospital and in the community. We often go out to people's homes, to programs, to schools, anywhere that where the person is. We do co-response with the police, so we often go to various locations to do a crisis events. They could also come into our office.
So if a crisis team goes into a, to visit and evaluate a person, a patient, potential patient at 3:00 in the morning, what happens between 3:00 and business hours? Do they take him, take that person and take them into this facility, and then paperwork is done for the admissions after, is that what you're saying?
No, we can do an admission at that time, but I'm, I'm, what I'm telling you is we haven't. So if we evaluate someone at 3:00 AM and we think that they meet the level of care for a crisis stabilization unit, we could do an admission. We have the staff there, they would be able to come in, do the admission. We've, again, this is the third program we have, and we haven't ever done an overnight admission.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, understand how it all works. So, at, at your facility, how many staff people do you have on 24/7, then, overnights?
On the overnight, we have...
Not on call, physically?
Physically onsite.
Onsite.
We have one clinician and two, two staff, well, three staff, one nurse and two counselors. This is a much smaller program, so we'd have two staff and, again, one clinician, so it'd be one less, three staff at all times.
Okay, so the first numbers you gave were other facilities?
Existing programs, yeah.
So at this, this facility, then, you're proposing three personnel overnights?
Correct.
And during the day, how much, how many additional people get added to do the intake and whatever?
Well...
For the admissions process?
Again, this is two programs in one space, you're just talking about the, the 24-hour program? It's hard, so...
I don't know, I, I guess maybe I'm confused, or you're making it more confusing.
Well, I don't mean to make it more confusing.
I think you've got a, if you've got two programs...
In one space, so...
You probably want to address one program, what it does, and then is, is it part of this application or not? And then the other part of the program, maybe the crisis intervention, that's really
Not part of it.
What the application is, because you are running that, we'll call it Program A already.
So, so in terms of the, the code and the zoning and the business use, the overnight stay is the, the R4 use, the other programs are, fall under B business use because they're clinical office space.
So it's just the overnight is only what is subject to special permit?
So staffing for that, is that, so that, so I'll speak only to the staffing for the 24-hour program? Okay. So it's three, two staff overnight, and during the day, it is, I have to count, one, two, seven total staff during the day, so that would be from 7:00 AM until 3:00 PM, from 3:00 to 11:00, that drops to three staff, and then on the overnight, it's two.
I guess I'm gonna ask my question that I had, or I said I was gonna hold it. And we talked about crisis intervention. So I guess I'm looking for a definition of the word crisis.
Sure.
Now, does that involve, was it domestic abuse, disputes, drugs, addiction, alcohol, and I'm gonna use the term, just plain violence?
It could.
That, can the police bring somebody there at night and say he, he or she needs to be admitted to this program?
So, that's a great question. So, the police can't just identify somebody and ask for admission. The police would request an evaluation of the individual, depending on the risk that it would pose to the crisis team, that would depend on where the person was valued. So we often go to police departments to evaluate people within the department, or we go as a co-response with the police to the location of where the person's at, and depending, again, depending on the level of risk, then the evaluation's completed. Sometimes they, in the end, they have to go to the emergency room because they need further containment before they go to the next level of care. They, police do drop off at other locations, they call ahead, and depending on, you know, if the person is highly intoxicated, unable to walk clearly under the influence, or violent, that would not be an appropriate drop off.
Okay, so the violence pretty much is not appropriate under your definition of the programs that you have?
Correct.
And if that's, if there is some violence involved, then they're either located somewhere else, either the police station or a different home or something like that.
Or the hospital that has, that has the ability to keep you locked in a room.
Hospital, that's a good point. Yep, okay. That gives me a better understanding, I mean, crisis can be a lot...
I live and breathe this, it's hard, it makes sense in my mind.
Yep.
So I'm trying to make, have it make sense in yours, I apologize.
Thank you for that. You may continue, Mr. Dole.
All right, thank you. Item two, the proposal shall prevent, shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to the adjacent street's property improvements. The ERCOT Family LLC has done a very good job of answer, the ERCOT Family LLC has done a very good job of managing the various businesses located within 205-213-SCHOOL STREET. There is plenty of parking adjacent to the building with clear pass to the main entrance of the building, as well as good access to the adjacent streets into the major highways in the Gardner area. Item three, the proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicles and goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment or use. Answer, the existing off-street parking at the 205-SCHOOL STREET property is more than adequate for the parking needs, as well as loading and unloading of vehicles at the site associated with the proposed CSO program space. The proposed program shall average less than 20 cars parking at the property or associated with the program space in any given day, and that includes not just the overnight care, but the daytime use of this space.
Bless you.
Item four, the proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use and disposal of sewage, refuse, or other waste products and methods of drainage of surface water. Answer, the project involves interior tenant improvements and will have no effect on the drainage of surface water. Again, there will be that exterior stair, but very limited roof area. The proposed utility sewer, plumbing, heating, and cooling improvements to the space will meet all current code requirements, so there will be some additional HVAC work at that space for, for heating and cooling for 24/7 use. Or it's already done, but it'll, but the tie-ins to individual... Item five, the proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. Answer, the primary work... Answer, the primary work will be interior tenant improvements at the project. The proposed respite care will not create any nuisance sounds, dust or odors. The proposed egress stair at the exterior will be compatible with the general industrial design of the overall building. And again, that egress stair is only for a life safety egress, it's not going to be used. I, ideally, it will never be used. It's there, to exit, it'll be lighted and allow exit throughout the course of the year, but.
How do clinical staff get into this facility?
Um, they get in through, um, this drawing, the previous drawing, um. Having main entrance, yes, yep, and there will be a future elevator there. So, this right here is the best drawing showing that. This is the main entrance to two oh five school out on the street, this is a large atrium space, steps down, stairs up. And access through at the second, third floor of two.
Yeah, two oh five, is that the one off of School Street?
That's the one with the big clock or near, the big clock right near.
Henry Sands offices?
That's two thirteen, so it's set up in two sections originally, and it's two oh five and two thirteen, side by side and joined. Henry Sands is actually, physical address is two thirteen School Street, the main entrance to the building is two oh five School Street.
There's an elevator right in there.
There is an elevator now, but it doesn't join to that section of the building. We have to propose, we're working on engineering so the program goes through to put a new elevator in. So, which meets the new state codes for gurney acceptable, it has to be a larger elevator.
Is the plan to access this space, because I don't see it.
The plan, uh, yep, right here, in this drawing right here. So, this is the main atrium space, there's the elevator right there to building twenty. Twenty-four, building twenty-three is here, this is building twenty-two, the new elevator will be over here in this large atrium space with a gurney size.
Where does it come up here?
It'll come up, it's not shown on the plans yet.
That's what I'm asking.
It's coming up right here, it's coming up right over there.
Oh, it's not in this room?
It's not in this room.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there'll be a common area hallway off of that, so we can access the entire, there's twenty-six thousand square feet up there.
Good.
Yep. So, that should make it all handicapped accessible.
Excellent.
Um, and again, the, um, building does have a fair amount of windows at that third story level, but they're all fixed windows. So, it'll have n- natural air brought in for ventilation, but there won't be operable windows, so. And at the back of the building, um, it's literally a good three hundred feet to the nearest residential place.
One of your overnight staffers and RN or a nurse, she's. Pardon me?
LPN.
An LPN.
Um, item six, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters, vehicles or pedestrians as is determined by the SPGA. Okay, answer, in the belief of the applicant, the proposed project will not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters or vehicles or pedestrians. Item seven, the proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. Answer, it is a belief of this, the applicant that this is correct. Item eight, the proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services' tax base in employment opportunities. Answer, the proposal shall provide additional highly skilled clinical and medical related jobs to the Gardner region. This will ultimately add to the employment opportunities and tax base of the city. Again, this is a nonprofit, but it will have people that are spending money in the city of Gardner and paying local taxes. Item nine, the proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. Answer, the proposal meets the city of Gardner's community development and master planning mission of promoting ec- economic development in the role of providing good jobs for local and regional residents as clinical and medical staff at the emergency services program and community crisis stabilization program of clinical and support options, CSO.
Thank you, well presented. Okay, at this point, I'll ask Mel and Randy if you have any questions for Mr. Dole.
On, well, more for the representative, um. Inpatient patients, are, are they go- some potentially going through some type of withdrawal as well? Or, or are you beyond that stage?
They could have minor withdrawal, manage those medication.
Just minor, we knew you're not getting somebody that's.
We, no, this is not a medical detox.
Okay, that was.
Okay.
Yep.
You're all set?
I think so.
Ain't nothing at this point.
No, I'm good.
I am confused about where.
Well, I think, you know, definitely we're going to visit it, so I think you'll have an opportunity to see it and then probably some, hopefully some clarification and answer to some additional questions at that point. We'll just ask if there's any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application. Mr. Jean, our building commissioner.
Mr. Dole, has, have you done any, um, have you done assessment of what the required parking would be for this space?
Um, I've done a preliminary code report, which I can get to you.
Per our zoning?
At what?
Per our zoning?
Per our zoning, I will, I will double check on that.
Yeah.
Yep, we do have.
We could get that information before the site visit maybe. Well, it is, it is, and, and I may be wrong, I don't know, but I would like to know.
I could tell you that we have two hundred parking spaces there now.
Well, I'm not going to ask you to do a, do a.
Yeah.
Required.
Traffic study.
Entire building.
No.
I'm going to ask you to do a required parking for this, this ten thousand square feet and the, the two different uses.
Yep.
And, um, let us know how many spaces we're looking at, and then perhaps your gentleman can, on your site visit, can see if that's available.
Well, I think, well, we're going to.
I'm trying to determine if we need variance before this is over for the parking, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to do, I'm going to propose the site visit to piggyback on the, um, Yale Street one.
Next Saturday.
So, we'll do that right after, and that gives you another week to do, prepare your documents.
And I can get, um, I'll, I'd send that directly to the building department.
You can email it to me and I'll make sure that the members get it.
Yeah, then we'll know if, if any other additional permits are required at that point.
So, the twenty, sorry, the twenty-ninth, at what time?
We're going there at nine o'clock, I, I would say. By nine thirty, we should be leaving, nine thirty, twenty, ten, leaving there, so why don't we say ten o'clock, we'll get to your location. We could be there earlier, but I don't want to tell you at nine thirty and we don't get there till ten. Okay. So, Mr. Jean, you have any further questions at this point?
That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do, do the inpatients bring vehicles or have that option of bringing vehicles, if they do a self, self-check-in?
Yes, they have an option of bringing their own vehicle.
Because that just, I know, I mean, I know that the parking situation down there depends. There's a lot of parking, not in front of the building, off to the, if you're facing the front of the building to the left. But are you going to designate specific parking for your staff? And patient parking if they're bringing their own vehicles?
We have designated parking already.
You will be designating it?
Where, where's, where, where are they designated?
We have the lower parking lot, so if you're facing the building, the driveway to the right, down and to the right, there's, which, it's designated CSO. Unused now. And because we don't have the amount of staff that fill, would fill that. And then in front of the building, in that front parking lot.
Yep.
We have.
Three.
Three designated.
That's two-tiered, front and back.
Yes.
There's, there's, actually, there's a parking lot in front, directly in front of the building.
Correct.
A parking lot to the north of the building, upper, and then down below, there's another parking lot in the lower section. That section is designated to CSO now for the third floor. They don't have that amount of staff to fill that parking lot down, there is probably a good twenty-five spaces that aren't being used.
Yeah, well, I think what you're going to put together for Mr. Jean is you've got two operations, whether you have one patient or ten patients. You've got to figure it on the maximum, and if you have three employees, but you can handle ten. And the, the ordinance will tell you, if you're square footage, et cetera, you need X number of spaces. You may say, well, we don't have that many people, the ordinance says you have X number of spaces.
There'll be that amount of spaces available for.
But we'll, we'll do a code, we'll do a zoning analysis of the number of spaces that it will generate per, per the code. And again, that'll probably be more than, whoever will be there actually, and we'll determine how many spaces are available and.
Now, on an aerial, can you blow up and kind of show at least where the designated spot? Because you're, you're talking this lowest, lower lots, upper lots.
And then the three, the three spots are up, up here.
Correct.
Up here.
Up here, yes, right there.
Right here, okay, gotcha. Okay, and I'll, I'll review this, but so.
Just ask, is, is Mr. Dole does this, if, when we get there, if you can say, okay, this is the parking.
We'll walk you right through the parking areas.
A, B and C, or however, whatever you got.
We'll send you a, um, ahead of the meeting as well, we'll send you a, a, a aerial with a redlined note of the location, so.
I have a parking lot map at the building, we can also, I'll give to him, so he can show you that.
Yeah, however you do it, I, you know, because I'm confused now.
Okay, so, no further, there's no additional, uh, city employees who would like to speak, or any butters to the property? Who would like to speak in favor of? Are you in favor, sir?
I'm not sure, I just want to ask questions, you guys, butting properly, so, questions to the facility.
All right, I'll give you the opportunity, because there's very few other people than yourself in here that might be a concern, so.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ron Vaughn, I'm at, uh, one fifty-four Chestnut Street, I've been there twenty-eight years. I worked at the building right across the street, simplex, for many years, I worked for them since eighteen, seventeen years. And, um, I'm also an alcoholic and a drug addict, so I quit in seventy-nine, quit in eighty-five for those two things. But anyways, my concern, my na- my landlord and I were talking, and the only concern we have is the, um, adequate staff. Twenty-four, seven, minimum of security, say somebody does have a breakdown, whether it's alcohol or whatever. And they want to fly off the handle, like you said, four o'clock in the morning. What kind of staff, professional staff that's there, is there a lock-in facility ability to lock somebody in? Say, okay, this guy's going off the handle, we got to lock him there and call, so there is nothing like that.
No, we, I mean.
Could somebody leave at four o'clock in the morning, just go off the door, on or off the handle?
If someone's flying off the handle?
Yes.
No, they would not just be able to lock out the door, we would call, if that were to happen, we would call, um, the police and an ambulance.
How would they be stopped? So, the police would arrive, but they could be already out the door down the street already, is that possible?
That is possible.
That's the concern we have, that's all, this type of, uh, security for the area, um, we're familiar with that, because we live right across the street.
Yep, I'm very familiar with it.
And it's very quiet neighborhood.
What do you do in your existing facilities in case like that?
A big part of, and I think I've said this already a few times, a big part of our admission is a crisis evaluation prior to. Um, we do a very good job of protecting the front door. There are people, there's other places for people who are experiencing some of what you're talking about, and this would not be the place. Um, this is really, we really assess people for their ability to be maintained at a non-locked facility.
But to his point, you can't guarantee that.
I can guarantee it, but when that happens, we have never had anybody. We, well, we've had, I think you're probably going to speak to this, we have had people who have required, um, from our own outpatient office.
No, I'm not even going to speak to that, I want to speak to a neighbor of ours that's out there on Chestnut Street already. We have a handicap adult facility that is a residential facility that is adjoining our property.
I'm familiar with it.
And you have more likeliness, we've had police officers at our property more than once, of men, adults, grown men going into a crisis, walking down the street in the middle of the day. It's not a locked facility, it's a house, it's a residential house. That adjoins our property, I mean, literally, it's attached to the corner of our property, it's between our parking lot and our front lawn. You're going to have more incidents of that than we would ever have at our property.
Well, I am familiar with, uh, drug and alcohol detox, and I'm familiar with stage.
No, well.
I mean, if, if.
You did say alcohol, those type of situations.
Alcohol, I said.
Oh, I thought that was spoke of.
If we're not a medical detox, we can't.
You're right.
So, we, if someone needs to detox from alcohol, we would not be the place to go. If they are at the end of their detox and they need some comfort medications, or if they're at the end of their detox for other drug use. You said that you are clean and sober, so you understand, um, we can provide those comfort measures, but we can't provide more high-level detox.
So, I, I'm thinking maybe possibly, not, I'm not saying anybody specifically or any problem specifically, but. I know that at the end of the detox, say, three to four days, if somebody, what's the earliest somebody could come to your facility out of detox?
It really depends on the person, there's no, again, we, we closely monitor our front door because it's not locked. Because it is a, it's a facility that people have to come to voluntarily, so we, and, and it has to be safe for everybody.
So, all these security measures are covered, you got this cops on the speed dial, whatever, that, you got this.
We were, you know, we're actually, here in Gardner, I've already met with the Gardner Police Department, but we have very good relationships with our other facilities, the police departments, but part of why we have such a good relationship is because clinically, we manage people very well. We can't, you're right, can't predict the future, but we have done a really good job with our staff being able to manage. And in the end, if someone does need to go, then we utilize the police or.
I mean, your current plan is, is what you've explained, there's nothing saying that in the future, you can't take, you know, go to the next step as an enhanced treatment, take somebody who, who is in the middle of some type, there's no.
No, we wouldn't, we, I mean, we are, will be licensed by the Department of Public Health. Which requires us to limit our service, our scope of service, so we couldn't just add our medical detox.
Where are your other facilities?
Uh, we have two ninety-eight Federal Street in Greenfield, uh, that is both a crisis and a, um, respite and CCS program. And then twenty-nine North Main Street in Florence, which is also a CCS crisis stabilization unit and crisis team and respite. Uh, pardon, Manhattan, it's sort of like Baldonaville, is the town. Um, and then we have a crisis team in Alba.
And, and just to note on that, if you went to, um, if you were going to go to the next step, that would involve CSO having to get licensed by the state to do, like, uh, that medical detox, and that would most, I'm quite sure in the code, it would fall under institutional use, which would again require, it would not be allowed by rights, so that would be again. At that point, back to here, and, but I don't, I, my clear understanding is that CSO wouldn't be developing that model for this space.
No, that is never, that will never be the plan for that space.
Yeah, I think you're very targeted on who the clients are that you're going to work with. If they exceed those parameters, then there's another avenue for them to be treated somewhere else, not at this location. And I think you're correct, you can't predict what anybody's going to do every day. If somebody will call, just varies from the plan a little bit, you have an option, or you know the options you have to either contact the police, contact other facilities, et cetera, and just take care of what's happening. But you can't predict everybody every day.
No, and I, you know, to your point, I, I live in Gardner, I've lived here for twenty-five years, so I'm very well aware of the area and, um, the concerns that you bring if I were living across the street.
Well, I'm doing it for me and my landlord, that's all, I've been there twenty-eight years at the same property, so anyways, I do thank you for the answers. And I wish you the best of luck with that, be safe all of yous, so thank you.
Thank you for asking. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any other, any individual would like to speak in favor of? Any individual or individuals who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any individuals like to speak in opposition to this application? No opposition questions, okay, I'll turn it to my board members if you have any questions. Okay, so definitely, we want to visit the site, and as I said, I'd like to piggyback it after the Yale Street. For roughly ten o'clock. Now, since we have an individual here that, you know, expressed some concern, I'll just state, you have the right to attend the viewing. However, if the applicant or the owner of the property does not want to allow you on the property.
He's more than welcome. He's more than welcome.
So, they, but I'm going to say they, you, then you not, cannot come in, but if they're okay, you can join us on the viewing. But you're limited in the conversation, you can't start asking a bunch of questions at that point in time.
Honest, I won't.
Because, you know, any other individuals here that might be interested are not going to hear your conversation. Because, you know, any other individuals here that might be interested are not going to hear your conversation.
I would not ask.
Okay, just want to make it clear how it goes.
But I'd like to go. I just wouldn't ask questions.
Oh, you can work that out with them.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to continue the case. Do I have a motion to continue at the next month?
Some move.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor of continuing to next month? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, then we are continued to next month. Hopefully we'll have a bunch of answers after we view your property. And, uh, so then, we're not closing your case. Your case is staying open. And, uh, and I'm just going to move on to our next item of business, but.
Yeah, and sorry, just a quick question. Do you have, as of now, the date set up for next month or not yet?
We do. I believe it's November sixteenth.
November sixteenth.
That'd be the third Tuesday, right?
Oh, our next meeting, I'm sorry.
It's the fifteenth? My mistake, it's the fifteenth.
Okay, and then you'll have those documents from Mr. Jean.
Right, we'll get those to you, um, by, um, sorry, the twenty-ninth is the Saturday after this, so we'll get it to you. At the latest, it'd be like Monday of next week, just like me.
That's perfect. Um, I'm working on the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, so don't wait that long.
Okay, so you all set, then? We've moved this on, so I'm going to go to the next thing. I'll take a five-minute recess here, just we can get things, then we're going to attack the minutes that we have. We're back in session now. Before us, we have two sets of minutes, one from the zoning board meeting of April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and September seventh, two thousand twenty-two. I'll take the minutes of April nineteenth first. If you've had an opportunity to review them, uh, make any changes, please so note now. And I'll just state that the signing has to be Mr. Haglund, myself, and Michael Gary as a clerk. Michael Gary is, uh, has recently resigned from this board due to medical reasons. Uh, and actually, Mr. Cornet is filling in now as our third member going forward, so. You have not had an opportunity to read these, have you?
No.
He, I don't think he'd be familiar with them anyway.
I wouldn't, no.
I think two signatures are sufficient. It's a majority, two, two signatures are sufficient.
Yeah. Okay, I've reviewed them. Randy, you reviewed them. They're all set, so.
Make a motion then that we approve the minutes of April the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
April nineteenth, yep. Uh, I'll second it. And any questions? No? Clean, I think all the corrections have been made. So I'll move forward for vote to approve them. All in favor approving?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes approved. I'll go to the next set of minutes. And the members present on that one is myself, Randy Haglund, and Mel Cornet, so you're part of that?
Yes, I have read those.
Okay, and maybe you've read these?
Yep.
I have, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September seventh, two thousand twenty-two?
I move.
Segmented.
Okay, any further discussion? No? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposition. Minutes approved. Is that I do not know of any further business before the board this evening? The members have any further business?
No.
Okay, now your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.